Welcome back.
Give our own back bag. Well, Massachusetts is one of the...
Maine's lucky they have natural lumber.
So, our next item on our agenda is to hear reports from the Collins Center. This is looking into the establishment of a community development department. And we've asked them as consultants to meet with a number of different people around town. And part of the job is also to meet with these four committees as we proceed with doing this project.
I was obviously assigned by Doug to constantly say the mantra of this is, you know, in terms of communicating, you know, the Board of Selectmen is very fixed on getting input from, you know, obviously our brother and sister boards and from the community. And this is just, you know, one example of that. So, we really, you know, we want to make sure this position serves everyone's ideas and everyone's visions. So, we, again, we really appreciate you participating and giving the Collins Center all of this information.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Monica Lamboy. I'm with the Edward J. Collins Jr., Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. I'm here with my colleague Dick Kobayashi to work with you all on the project to look at the planning and development functions for the town. Just by way of background, I am a city planner. By training and by work, I have also worked in organizational development in Oakland, California, Washington, DC. And just before coming to the Collins Center, I was the Director of Strategic Planning and Community Development for the city of Somerville. We worked on the Green Line Extension. We did the comprehensive plan, including a huge summer vision process there and transit-oriented development zoning, a whole slew of things. So, I've been with the Collins Center since 2010, working all over the state, which has been wonderful. And this process has been great. I mean, the amount of participation, the amount of people who have come out just this meeting this morning is testimony to the commitment of the community here. It's not the same everywhere across the state. So, that's hats off to you. I'll let Dick introduce himself and his background.
Very briefly, I've worked in state and local government in Massachusetts for quite a few decades. I started when my bill was all black. I was a planning director, planning and development director in a couple cities. I worked with Commonwealth for 11 years on municipal development. I became an independent consultant in the mid-'90s. I did most of my work in the former Soviet Union in Eastern Europe. As I told the group the other night, during that part of my career, much to my surprise, my Massachusetts experience proved quite empty. And I've been with the Collins Center, working in it, in the consulting practice since, almost since its founding in 2008.
So, just a top process check, we have one hour, is that correct? Or an hour and a half?
Hour or hour and a half, 60 to 90 minutes.
Okay, great. So, we will try to use your time very wisely. It would be helpful to me, oh, I see different colors. Okay. People just go around the room and say what their board is so that we can, I know you all know each other, but we don't.
Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Planning Board.
CBA.
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 Planning Board.
Planning Board.
Conservation Commission.
Conservation.
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 Selectmen.
Selectmen.
A little bit of land, territory here around the room.
We also have representatives from the historical commission.
Fabulous. Thank you for coming as well.
In economic development.
And housing.
And housing, yep.
Great, that's wonderful. So, I'd like to start off at the risk of repeating conversations that you've all had before, but it's great to have everybody in the room. My first question sort of is, why are we here? Why did this initiative start? What are sort of the problems or the challenges that brought you to the point where you said, you know, maybe somebody from outside could help us with this? So, we've heard from staff, we've heard from people individually, but what are some of the challenges going on?
Well, that's two different questions. I was going to answer how did this start.
Okay.
The birth of it was from a housing initiative.
And what about the housing initiative?
How to coordinate it better, how to achieve our goals, how to prioritize, what's the best expenditure of money, what's the need? How do those all come together? How do we not operate in silos? How do we use each other's best ideas and talents and achieve the community's goals? How do we, how do we make workforce housing flourish here so that folks can afford to live in Falmouth and we can increase our sustainability? Where our population, give or take, right now is about 60 over 60. We know that's not a sustainable demographic. And so, how does, you know, and then, of course, that swoops back to the foundation of how does the community best develop? How do we do it efficiently for our builders? What kind of building do we want? Where do we want the building? How does that intersect with transportation? How does this all, how does it get superimposed with affordability? How do we increase our housing percentage so that we're not susceptible to 40B development that we don't think is best for Falmouth? And how do we do all of this in the context of organized and doable transportation traffic-wise so we don't burden our residents with not even being able to get to town, to get to Woodsville? So, how do we manage the traffic in that? And how do we, even step back further and say, how do we do all of this and still keep the historic, important element of traffic and the je ne sais quoi, the fabulous specialness of Falmouth so that our tourism economy, which is a great part of our, you know, that sustains us, continues to be beneficial?
Make sure the communities are actually working together in the same direction as opposed to either working at odds. We have so many different groups like that.
So, I hear a complex net of issues. And how do you organize yourselves around that?
And I don't know if this is really going to be the job description, but I hope it's to facilitate interaction between our board, for one. And another, to facilitate streamlined permitting for business and also to direct business, where to go and what, how to permit. We have a good example when I first was running for our Selectmen. I had a local business owner tell me that she was trying to sell soft drinks on the bike path, realized someone brought to her attention, you need permits for that. So, she went, she had to shut down for the summer, went through what she thought was the proper process to get all her permitting, came in and checked in the spring, and everyone seemed to think that everything was all in order. And then, in the middle of June, she gets a letter from Selectmen saying, oh, I'm sorry, it's come to our attention, you don't have the proper permits. So, another summer lost. And so, I hope it remedies those types of situations.
Some uncertainty as to the processes and how to get through efficiently?
And also that same uncertainty, perhaps, within Town Hall itself.
And I think just part of that is the larger issue of that town government being really more user-friendly for citizens so that people know, you know, have a better idea of where to be directed for whatever the issue might be. And that some, you know, when we talk about community development, obviously it implicates all of these things that have been mentioned. But that this potential new position helps to clarify sort of when consumers come to Town Hall for some of these particular things, who do they interact with? And it doesn't become a web of, you know, interacting with different people.
Right. Well, I brought staff together one time. I said, where do you start? Where does the process start? And everybody's like, with me, with me, with me. I'm like, ah, that's a little confusing. All right.
And I think part of this is really how do we, as a town, manage this process? You know, how do we put the proper management in place so that there is a single point of responsibility for making sure that this is orchestrated and everybody keeps being reminded of what their role is and how they should be supporting the development activities, if you will, in the town itself? So, to me, it is important that we look at this as a management challenge so we can address all of these issues that have been surfaced.
Management and accountability is important?
Yes.
To me, when I hear the term "community development," it is all that has been discussed today. And that is the housing, the management, the listening, everything else. But community development, to me, also means economic development. We need an economic development expert who can teach us how to market this town, what is appropriate, who can reach out. Boston is reaching out. They brought in GE, and then it's another large firm that they've brought in. How does Falmouth market itself because we're decrying that we're losing all of our young people? They aren't going to be here if we don't have jobs and jobs that pay enough.
So, population changes are happening that you want to try to get in front of and maybe change that trend line in some ways?
Well, I have a vision of it from what I see in other towns. I do a lot of business in towns over the Cape, and I've gone to chat them. They have a, their building departments, community development. You walk in, you walk in the front door, there's a community development department. Person comes to the front desk, talks to you, asks you what you want to do, takes you. Well, here's the people you need to see. By the way, there's the zoning officer, and right over here, here's the Board of Health. And they just point you to where to go, and they're definitely, they respond to you right away. And it's from when you walk in the front door and you ask the question, they're right there to handle it. They're structured that way. They call it community development, that person just directs you left and right, where to go. And that, to me, that's a big part of the process. I don't know how many of you ever tried to apply for a building permit in this town, but you got to run all over the place. You get a list of about 20 things you have to do, including going all the way over to the DPW office over there to get them to sign off. You have to go to Conservation to sign off. You got to go to the taxes side of, you have to know your way around Town Hall to even get it done. And it's just a really cumbersome process. And I think if you try it sometime, you'll really get an idea of what it's like.
I would agree with Jim, but beyond the physical convenience of logistics, what I heard the other night, because I attended the meeting, there's a gentleman that brought up a good point that has an overreaching or overarching message, and it's regarding what Susan said about a mission. His perception and somewhat mine is, at least in permitting, it's reactionary permitting versus a prediction-based permitting. That being said, we're all service-oriented, we're supposed to be. The customer is job one. And so, without that overarching predictability, that's where it leads to the frustration of the customer, and I think echoed by Jim in that example. But from a, you know, case in point, you know, the permitting sometimes is a little frustrating from the standpoint of affordable housing developer in town, for one example.
Thank you. Barbara, panel?
So, I'll probably repeat what I said the other night, but, I mean, there's a sort of multi-pronged issue here to me. And one is clearly we need to bring young people back to take care of us old folks one day.
I don't want that job, by the way.
Oh, Sue, you promised you'd take care of me. Now, in order to do that, we need, I think, high-speed internet because we can't get entrepreneurs here with the system that we have. And I understand the Cape, whatever it's called.
Open Cape.
Open Cape is very costly for individuals to tie into. But until we do something to bring the cost down or to bring Fios across the bridge, I think there's going to be a very difficult time getting young entrepreneurs to come here. But they want to come here. It's not that they don't want to come and live here. So, in order to bring young people back, I think we need a why. I think we need something that's going to pull young families here. I think we need jobs that are sustainable year-round. And in order to have that, we need good medical care. And in order to have any of that, we need housing that's affordable. So, if I put on my hat from the Affordable Housing Committee, it hearkens back to somebody comes in with a permit, and they may want to build, but they have to go, just as Jim said, hither, dither, and yon, instead of having one coordinated place to come, Board of Health, building, engineering, every entity that goes into building. Because otherwise, people are going to come in and say, this is untenable for me, I'll go to another town. And that's not what we want if we want to grow. And that will grow our economy because young people grow the economies. So, that's my say.
I guess in listening to all of this, I feel like it's really sort of a balance, that this individual's job would be to balance sort of progress with preservation. So, we need to progress for all of these reasons. You know, we need, you know, job development, economic development. But also, we do want to preserve, as, you know, Sue brought up, really the nature of this community, not only because it has a value to the people who live here, but because it's the biggest, you know, that's the draw for our biggest industry, which is, bless you, the tourism industry. So, how do you balance and facilitate both, you know, progress on the front of moving forward so we're not, you know, in a time capsule and aging and not having new invigorating industries and development? But also, you know, really maintaining what we value as a community and that small-town, you know, history that we have. So, I think it's a tall order, but I think that that's what would make this position stand out, is that they'd be charged with something that's overarching like that.
Let me ask you a follow-up question. Part of what we're trying to do is understand and articulate what exists and also identify what your visions of the future are and how a system can do that. So, if you could, describing the system today, which may not be a system, but the system today, what descriptors would you use? Fast, slow, clear, confusing? And I want to jot those down because we will use those as part of the background of what we have today, and then I'm going to flip it later. So, give me some descriptors of system type, one, two.
Okay. Just today, I would say sustainability.
Today?
Different.
You have it today, is sustainable?
Well, let me, let me explain. Out of this meeting today came coastal resiliency kind of coordination. So, I think one of, one of the things that is going to be paramount, along with the other items, is that this person we're looking for must be familiar and have background in coastal resiliency-oriented communities. So, I don't know.
You're a whole question ahead of me. You're a whole, she's like, she's on the board.
However, that, okay, say blue.
We will get, we'll have that for the next week. So, fragmented, I heard.
Stay with the one word.
Today, fragmented, is what we hear.
Yeah.
Other descriptors for today?
Cumbersome.
Cumbersome.
Uncoordinated.
Uncoordinated. Other words for today?
I think in the case of our board, we often are dealing with after-the-fact problems. And so, one of the things that we need to improve somehow is the visibility, or at least the knowledge, that these regulations exist. So, I would say they're kind of obscure to a lot of people who live here, and particularly to people who are moving in.
Not visible today?
Yeah. They just don't know they exist. Things happen, then we have to deal with them after the fact. And it's a very unpleasant situation.
So, you're also in a response mode, too, it sounds like?
Yes.
Response mode, okay.
Newcomers perspective, understaffed.
I agree.
A little defensive mode, historical, that we're sort of restricted, that we've grown, where things are right now is because of where they came from. It's not that we devised it, separated it this way, it's just that, no, sort of things happened. Certainly, the reorganization of Town Hall was attempted two years ago to try to bring us up into a much more modern, efficient system. We couldn't get the funding for it, so we're still stuck. You know, why is Planning Board down there? I said, well, it used to be someplace, you know, planning was there because it got moved when we moved things in Town Hall. And so, we're stuck with an old system.
So, evolved over time in a way? And I think you can say that about the space, but you can also say that about your regulations, right? Everybody always layers, right? You layer the new one on top of the old many, many times. Okay, evolved over time.
So, I think for zoning, maybe this goes to the understaffed aspect, but we have a problem with being effective because enforcement is only complaint-driven. So, there's no way to check really to see.
So, not proactive, complaint-driven, okay?
I was just going to say we're in a reactive rather than proactive mode for all of the reasons that people have discussed.
I just wanted to address a comment, two comments you made about permitting, and Jim talked about it as well. While the permitting process that we have for getting a building permit does seem a bit cumbersome and gives you a good reason to get lots of exercise running around various offices, that actually was put in to facilitate and speed up the permitting process. Originally, all of that running around was done by understaffed building department. And so, you would put in a permit application, and it would languish for over a month while somebody in that office ran around and did that. And so, somebody came up with the idea, well, if the builder wants to get a permit, he can facilitate the process by running around and getting it all signed off. Result, we'd get building permits in less than a week. So, I thought it was an improvement. But I see it from the standpoint of somebody else who's not in that system running into that. So, therefore, we have to look at that. The other comment, I have to support this. You talk about economic development and building infrastructure and encouraging young people in industries, particularly tech. It is absolutely essential that this town move forward aggressively on high-speed internet. It's there. Open Cape is coming into these buildings, and yet it isn't in small businesses, it isn't in the home, and it's easily resolved. We need the willpower to do it. There are plenty of towns right in eastern Massachusetts that have a municipal high-speed internet service that would bring, it's there, it just needs the will. We need people to focus on those things, particularly if we want economic development.
Other comments from, is it open conversation?
I'd say reactive, maybe somebody said that before. And I'd also say stymied. And I think sometimes the process of getting things enacted via town meeting also slows our processes to a...
Slow and stymied, okay.
Dare I say, at times unwelcoming, and even hospitable to volunteers.
Unwelcoming? What else? How are the customers? What are you hearing from your customers? And who are the customers for these departments?
I solicited some questions from friends that knew this meeting was going to take place. Steve says, will the process of a community development entity change somehow than what currently exists? The second question, Terry said, will the roles and duties simply be overseen by a new development director instead of the town manager or his assistant? And John said, is this just another cog in the bureaucracy?
Fair question, right? To what end? And we'll get there. To what end are we organizing this? Is, right, it could just add another layer. That's not really going to help with the problems that you have. When I talked to folks, I heard not transparent, that sometimes there are surprises when you go to meetings and the developer doesn't know what to anticipate. So, it's not always transparent, would be one.
Just off of that, something that I hear from folks is that sometimes results don't seem consistent. So, results or process don't seem the same for different, you know, individuals or businesses or builders. And again, that may be because there's a transparency issue where someone doesn't understand why that situation is different. It may look similar on the surface, but I think that sometimes you hear that there's that feeling that things aren't consistent.
Well, when things are not transparent, people will fill in the story and they'll fill in the blanks based on what they think it might be. So, it's typically to your disadvantage to hold the blank. What are some other comments about the system today or descriptors?
I think that we need a new mentality and treat the citizens like customers. I don't think we really do that now.
About like owners.
Well, these types of departments have a lot of hats, right? They are facilitators, but they're also enforcers. And it's a complex customer service role to wear those two hats. So, sometimes you have to say no, but then how do you go behind that and say, well, but maybe you can do this? Or let's get creative? So, if people aren't playing both of those hats at the same time, it can be hard for the customer.
Just another way to say exactly what you said, it's a juxtaposition of the individual's rights and wishes with the community's rights and wishes. And that, you know, that has an actual push.
Complex balancing.
This is a comment that Courtney and I will also make, but the responsibility's on both sides. And I think, I mean, my experience in Town Hall is that people are very cooperative. And I'm always, well, people know, you know, I come into Town Hall and people ask where the Board of Health is or where the Health is, I'll take them down and show them. And I'm not necessarily saying people who have jobs here in Town Hall should be doing it. But for the most part, I mean, I just, there's been sort of a lot of sort of negative comments. And I just, I just want to say from my perspective, I think people have been very helpful.
Thank you. Yeah, and that's a really good point.
And I think the history that Courtney gave, because he was a builder here in town, he's a retired builder in town, but he's never retired. But he, but the fact is, this system evolved, evolved from a system that didn't work very well. And so, you know, I think now we can just sort of look in a positive way to make it better than it is now.
And I'm sorry, I didn't say that. There are a lot of positive things, too. Let's make sure we get those down as well.
And I'm one of those who's voicing negativity, but I just want to say, I mean, I could treat it great here in town. But I tried to hire a guy the other day who I was working on a job in Plymouth with him, and I really liked the way he did his work. And I said, I've got a couple of jobs in Falmouth I'd like you to look at. He said, Falmouth? No way. Said, I won't work there. It's a pain in the butt, and I'm just not going to go there.
Well, that's what I say, but it's both sides. Part of the pain in the butt might be how he approaches people also.
I like the... You sure he wasn't talking about me?
It's just a small example, but it was only a few weeks ago.
Part of the pain in the butt is that we actually have regulations.
Part of the pain in the butt is that we actually have regulations in this town that we have all voted for, we all agree on, and we wouldn't want them not to be there because we've actually maintained controls and things that we'd say, thank goodness we did that. And other towns haven't. And said, yeah, Falmouth's a pain, a hard place to work because of the restrictions and requirements that were put in there. And I know when I was a homeowner, doing some construction in my own house with the planning department, I was amazed how much support I got down there, downstairs as someone who had no idea what I was doing. And this is before I was a selectman, so they had no idea who I was, I just thought I was an idiot trying to do some of my own maintenance. And they were right, but they were very, very helpful.
One, two, three, four.
Actually Doug just really touched on the point that I wanted to bring out, which is that, you know, we're here to discuss community development as a department and a position. And I mentioned before that, you know, I think part of the issue here is not just of, you know, a lack of coordination, which a director would help with, but also understaffed, that we just, you know, we're so busy and so reactive, there isn't time for anyone to go around and help with coordination. There isn't time for someone to focus on economic development. There isn't time for someone to focus on coastal resiliency because we don't have enough professionals on board to do the work. But part of the frustration that, you know, that we're hearing from contractors apparently comes from the zoning bylaw itself. And I just wanted to, you know, and I'm the least knowledgeable person in the room about it, but Brian brought it to my attention, I just wanted to maybe ask Brian to speak to, you know, some of it may be intentional, you know, that we want to protect our environment regulation, but some of it may be complicated because there's just over the years an accumulation of complex, vague, contradictory bylaws. There isn't effort underway, as I understand it, to address that. But again, Brian, maybe Brian can comment on that more specifically.
Well, Bob Ritchie is the former Assistant Attorney General of the Municipal Law Unit. And Bob told me the other day that in all his career, he has not ever received such power. But Falmouth, remember, was the first, one of the first towns in the nation. Bylaw first came forward in 1926. And the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court justified zoning in 1922. And one of the first towns in the nation. It was spurred by the Walmart of its day. Walmart of the day was Queens Falmouth. It was outside the town center. It was too big, it was too ugly. So they had, they came in and brought in some stuff. And it's been knit together, crafted together to the point where it has to be, it's going to take a few years to do this, re mold it into more user friendly. Believe it or not, Aladi O'Gore and I and Frank Duffy have sat down on any number of occasions and said, what does this mean? And how can we, how can we come up with a consistent interpretation that favored which must have nurtured the bylaw on time? The way that's thousand, I think we'd be pretty good trying to guide some of the permit boards around here on the way to the right complex.
If I could add to Brian's comment, zoning historically has been about writing what you don't want. It's, it's not about what you do want. And develop, and somebody said it the other night, you know, if you tell developers what you do want, then they can go, oh, I can do that, or that's not my stuff, I'm going to go someplace else. But you have to tell them what you do want and the codes, the historic codes just don't, don't do that very, at all, you know? And you can't, that's why you get long laundry lists of can't do that, can't do that, can't do that. And so, it's, it's changing as, as a, as a, as a tool, it's changing a lot. I had a couple of people in order. One, two, three, four. Okay.
So, you know, I think one thing that may help a little, not, I have to say, I'm the newest person probably here. I've lived here for a little less than a year and a half. So Sam promised to keep me in line and that I have to stop talking about the town of Acton. However, that being said, when you go in to the town of Acton and you register to vote or you get a dump sticker, they give you a packet. And the packet is sort of a wonderful combination of things you need to know in town. And we've grown it through the years so that it makes new people understand better what to expect. When I came here, I felt so welcomed. Went to town hall because what do you do when you come from landlocked Acton? You go for a beach sticker and a dump sticker. And I, and we registered to vote. Those are the three big things for me. And people could not have been more accommodating and welcoming and kind. That being said, I would not want to be a developer here because back in the landlocked town, we reconstructed our town hall. So you walked in the door and if you were a developer, you go to the left and you go to conservation, building, board of health, everything a developer needs to move ahead. And there's a flow chart of what to do. And it makes, people hated coming to the town because we were pretty awful. And I think we've improved. I don't think we're, they are perfect yet. And the other thing that I'll just throw out, for many of the people that I've met here who are not quite as new, but new, who came from towns with open town meeting, this is a very disenfranchising way to move with representative town meeting that was put in in 1936 with 5,000 people. It, it feels not welcoming. It doesn't feel like you have a say. I've never gotten a call or any information about my representative. And I think it's hard to, when you come from open town meeting where you feel very integrated, to come to a town where it doesn't feel welcoming in that sense. So that's just totally off the topic, but, but I think there are ways to streamline our whole building process.
Thank you. In speaking to the first half of your comment, I want to add talented and committed staff. I will say, I met a lot of very talented with really interesting backgrounds and committed folks that, that work here. So I think that's definitely the system today. That's, one, two, three.
No, you took my word. I was going to say committed. I mean, we have folks, you know, all these folks in the room that the majority of folks here are getting nothing to do a lot of work, right? They're putting in a lot of hours for, you know, this is not their job, this is what they're doing extra on top of their work and other things. So really, and that's outside of this room replicated many times within our community. So I would say very committed and involved community.
Yeah, I, I, that's exact, you made the points that I was going to make initially, but I think really what we're involved is really a continuous improvement process. Really looking at ourselves, where we are today and asking, can we do business better to represent our citizens, the people that we serve basically? And so, this really a reflection, is there a way that we can structure our government in a way that actually is more responsive and delivers better services? And I think that's what this is all about.
Thank you. Thank you. Kenneth, did you have a comment?
Yeah, a couple of comments. So, so, you know, we've talked about the interpretation of the zoning bylaws and that's what the zoning board struggles with every time it meets. And so, we, you know, we, we do benefit from excellent staff guidance, I'd like to make that very clear. I think professional staff, and I've been on both planning and zoning boards over the years, has been incredibly valuable, remembering that these are volunteer boards. So we, I think, act more like a citizen's filter and we really depend on that expertise and professionalism to function well. The idea of reviewing the bylaws was something I think that we started to push, and so I'm glad to see that it's gathering steam because I think that's important. It has been cobbled together over many, many years, considering different interests, everything like the, from the coastal pond overlay district when we recognized there were issues with water quality, to affordable housing, as we try to address in this bylaw. So it's, it's been trying to serve many interests. One thing that is very significant is that because of the changes in the zoning bylaw over the years, something like over 80% of the properties in the town are pre-existing non-conformity.
Question.
So, you know, it's, it's hard for a homeowner to do anything without requiring some kind of special permit. We've, we've addressed that by making many of the smaller type projects something that can be administratively approved, so we don't have to see every single time someone wants to add a dormer to their property that isn't 25 feet from the front yard setback. So I think that we, what we struggle with is, you know, trying to balance the, at least this is how I look at it, the, the rights of the homeowners with the rights of the abutters. And that's probably a universal thing with zoning. And I hope as we go forward, we can continue to, to try to make the right decisions in terms of how to balance those interests. But as I mentioned earlier, I think that one of the things that's frustrating for the board is that once we do make decisions, it's very difficult to know whether they're adhered to. And we simply don't have the staff to, you know, go out and check, not just immediately after the decision's made, but, you know, on an ongoing basis whether these zoning regulations are being adhered to. So I think that goes maybe beyond just an overarching community development person to how do we do enforcement? Should it reside in the building commissioner's office? Should there be a separate enforcement officer? That's something that I, I feel strongly.
That, that level of non-conformity that you spoke to was a tactic done, I've not seen it outside of Massachusetts, but Somerville was at 97% non-conformity, which means you can't do anything. And then today we have the computers, you know, we can do so much more fine-grained work than ever before. So there's new tools to make sure the development is compatible without having to send everybody to, through a full-on, you know, special permit in order of variance to do everything they need to do. I had Kimberly.
Can I just comment? Yeah, I just want to make sure, I know Ken chose the word private development versus the abutter, be it a resident or whatever. To me, there's got to be a bigger picture. What's the impact on the community as a whole? Not just that abutters, the abutters to that. So I just want to make sure that that's a role that I think we have to have, is getting a broader perspective of what the impact is and then tailoring our bylaws accordingly.
You're, you're right, but I'll be like the new Supreme Court nominee and say, I think the zoning board approaches it more from a strict constructions kind of view. We're there to apply and interpret the bylaw. The planning board and the rest, and town meeting are there to enact the bylaws. So we will do what you guys come up with to the best of our ability. So we're not going to make by, zoning bylaw, you know, new zoning bylaw interpretations.
But, and that's exactly the point I'm making, is that you look at it narrowly, as rightfully so, but there needs to be a broader perspective also. And I think that's the reason, one of the reasons this board of selectmen feel like we need a community development director to kind of knit the whole thing together in an integrated sort of way, more of a harmonious way.
Let's get a couple more comments and I want to move on a little bit more. Kimberly, and then back there.
So I haven't, obviously I haven't permitted anything in the town as a consumer, but I do do that in other towns. And I think one of the things that's great as an outsider coming into towns, because we represent like Cumberland Farms, so we're in different communities, we're not local council. And it's computer friendly, being able to access things, the process online, the forms online, being able to email, to submit forms, things like that really speed up the process for a consumer and make it more friendly to outside people to come in and invest in the, in the community. There are communities that we go into where there, you have to call people, they don't get back to you, the forms aren't available, they have to send you the forms. That is certainly not developer friendly. So I think being kind of on trend with having everything accessible is certainly helpful.
And what about today? Do you think that they're, that's being done well?
I, you know, I, I've never gone through the process. I would have to go through the process too.
Sure.
From my perspective on the zoning board, I mean, what, what we do, I know Ceri's very helpful, but it's difficult, I think, when you're in it versus when you're on the outside trying to access it.
Sure, sure. So one, two, three, and I'm going to four, and I will stop for a second.
Okay. Understaffed, yes. But you look at more staff, we're underspaced. We don't have enough space. And when you think about rising sea level, well, the bottom floor of this building is already in the floodplain. So, and we've got a lot of paper storage down there that we use all the time. So then you have to come with another underword, underfunded.
Underfunded.
Two things that I wanted to add to the conversation, look around the room and the service industry, people are not represented in this dialogue. The people who are in the hospitality, you know, the workers, people who are in the hospitality and healthcare industry, et cetera. And I'd like to see that happen somehow. I know these people are overwhelmed because they are trying to make ends meet, they're trying, you know, the whole bit. But as everyone said, we need these people here and we need more. There's a shortage of CNAs right now, it's terrible. Our nursing homes are way understaffed, our hospitals. The other thing is, you know, I'm a affordable housing junkie and all of our housing entities in town, of which there are very productive people, very productive things happening, are not working together. There's, there's meetings that happen, I miss stuff, I don't know what's on the board. And so somehow, to be able to have a place where you can see what's coming up for 40 feet. Sam Patterson's been amazing to keep our affordable housing committee informed. Without him, previously the years that I was stumbling along, trying to learn what's going on, it was impossible. It just, it took so much time and energy. So those two things I think are really important in this.
So information's not always available and not always connected. So thank you. I had two more on the side, yes.
I'm just going to quickly feedback where we're at with the permitting as far as construction. There is now online, you can get express permit for roofing and simple projects that don't have complicated approvals. And I don't see why we couldn't move forward with online permitting for full projects. You could easily create a permit package, forward it to the conservation commission, they could review it, it could be forwarded to the next department, it would stop a lot of running around. And I don't see why.
We're talking about a universal application.
One of the concerns, because I, you know, and the point that Kim made around the Cumberland Farms is a good example, and there are certainly other developments. When you say community development director, it's not full board development. I mean, it really, the, the bylaws improvement are the key aspect because although we may want to expedite and make things more convenient, we need to do it in a way that is Falmouth friendly, where we don't get in a situation where there's expedited approval on things that really shouldn't be. So it, the director position, I think, is crucial in terms of incorporating both sides of the coin, where we, you know, we, we consider the, the businesses and residents in Falmouth in terms of what they want to preserve as well as doing, call it smart development.
I have one more existing question, because I wasn't totally clear from talking with the staff, and it ties into the transparency and the no surprises. By show of hands, which boards routinely receive staff reports that describe the project, what codes are applicable and recommended conditions of approval? Which boards get that kind of information ahead of time? Every time?
Yeah, every time we get them.
Planning, yes, every time. So they always get a staff report. Is it published at least 24, if not 48 hours before the meeting? Show of hands.
What do you mean, what do you mean by published?
On the, on the web, given to the applicant.
So not just to the public?
The actual staff report.
No, it's not published.
And does historic get staff reports? I wasn't totally clear. You don't get them at all?
We just get applications.
Yeah, okay. So I was going to say, in terms of a customer's perspective, that's really what is expected in most communities nowadays. So we'll, we'll talk about that some more.
Can I, can I ask you about that? How does that run afoul of, say, the public hearing process? So before coming into a public hearing, there's already recommended petitions for this project, doesn't that almost look like sometimes we'd be predetermined in how, in the outcome?
No, no. The board is the decision maker, the staff is just trying to assist you with some thoughts because they're here full-time or more doing the research and they're in the, in the weeds of it, right? They, they know all the, all the sections. And in some places, I've worked on kind of a menu of conditions with the boards, you know, you don't use them all the time and not in every case, and you can always tweak it, but kind of talked about ahead of time. Here's a spectrum of some things.
It lasts about 24 hours. So for every project, there's a big file and we're under the obligation to go see that file, right? Stuff comes into that file right up until, you know, our policy is it needs to be there a week ahead of time, right? That's our policy. But, you know, the applicant, the abutters, they all respond right up until the last minute.
Meetings at 6:30.
Meeting's at 6:30, and they're getting stuff into the office, quarter past four.
Well, that's kind of confusing, isn't it? One, two.
So I can't tell you how huge an issue this is, and the Board of Selectmen has been saying for years, and it's starting to come in, I know Holly, Affordable Housing will give us reports just to committee aspect, but on projects, a lot of times, builders will have invested tons of time and tons of effort and tons of money, and we're looking at something that, you know, has come within it, they've been the purview of another board for a while, and we're seeing it for the first time and going, how is this even part of what we do in Falmouth? I mean, that, this should, you know, so that, I think that the communication aspect, you know, whether it's a 40B development or, you know, some other things, you know, I think that one of the big things we're dealing with in our communication is coordination and getting rid of such an asylum mentality. So I think that that would really solve, that sort of informational, you know, openness and transparency, if you want to call it, would just solve a myriad of issues, save a lot of people a lot of money upfront.
Yeah, and it's useful to the community who's not as attuned to what code section 5.6.1 actually means.
Okay. I just want to comment on our process in conservation. First of all, I know that kudos out to the zoning board and planning board staff, and I also want to say the same for the conservation staff. But, so we get a packet of information, and we don't take things the night of the hearing. If they don't have it in a week before, then, and they want us to see it, then they have to wait till the.
That only applies to the applicant.
To continue, to the applicant, to the applicant. Other people can put stuff in. But the other thing is, we, through the years, and I've been on, Courtney and I have been on for a really long time, everybody else has been on for a long time, but we really urge people to talk to staff. Staff has office hours, and they'll go out into the field, and so if people take advantage of it, and many of them do, when it comes to us, Jen has talked with them about all the issues that might come up. And so.
So not to debate, I just wanted to make sure I understood. And we can, in the report, talk about the merits, there's strengths and drawbacks to any approach.
So I would just say two things, and it's not just to you, Betsy, but just in general in this conversation, is that, again, looking at the staffing issue, I mean, Jen could probably work, everybody could probably work all day, every day, seven days a week, and never really have in-depth conversations with every single applicant, because it's just too much. And then they have follow-up questions and things like that. So I think that, while the efforts are made, there are still questions that are left with applicants, probably right up to the time when they come in, come before the commission or, you know, planning board or ZBA. And so I think that that process, and that is a shift, of posting things ahead of time, not only, I think, gives a firmer deadline to that process, but I think it also addresses this, you know, sort of perception that rules are applied differently, or the process is confused, I mean, it really sort of puts that out there. And then somebody who doesn't come to a meeting, you know, who then is hearing, either reading a summary in the paper or hearing, you know, third person about, this person was allowed to do this, they can actually access that and look at it themselves. And I think that goes a long way for individuals, as well as professional developers or business owners, to be able to look at, you know, why didn't this succeed, or why did this succeed? How might it be similar to what I'm going to be proposing? And so I think that has a real value to address a lot of these, some of the more negative, you know, things that we put up there today. And certainly, you know, again, it's not because the process is being applied inconsistently, it's just more information, I think, out there. And with the constraints of limited staff, it's magnifying that job, it's putting that information out there, where staff can't answer all those questions that people have, there's just not enough individuals or time.
So I'm going to, one more comment, and I'll move to the next question, yes.
You know, enforcement, I think it's so critically important, because it actually provides income to the town. If someone is violating one of the codes, then they need to be fined if it says for every day you don't do this, there's a fine. And prior life, we took the salary of our enforcement officer, figured out how much time they actually spent, and then raised all the rates on our developers, and that funded another position. Because having no enforceable, I mean, it doesn't take long for someone to know, oh, we can do that in Falmouth, and I'm not saying that happens here, but we can do that, because there's no one there to really, they're not coming to the site to see if we're not starting until, you know, 7 o'clock in the morning. But it's a great revenue source, and I think builders who want to come here, once we get a process that's a little bit more user-friendly, would happily pay more money to come and build here.
Time is money, as they say, developers. Okay, now let's turn this question on its head, and say, going forward, what are the attributes, again, bullets, of the new system, whatever it might be, whether it's led by community development, whether it's called something else, whatever it is, what are those attributes? And then we can try to weave that into what we help to come up with here. What do you want for the future? What does it look like? What does it feel like?
I just want to say, with this communication, dissemination of information, the fact that our website is hopefully going to, the town website is going to be, coming to be, the new one is coming to be very soon, right? I don't know when, whoever someone could say.
About a month.
And also, we're looking to have a new phone system. We can't even leave a voice message here, and it's been going on for months and months. And worse than that, I call and it just cuts out and doesn't even go to anything. Lots of, you know, finally I figure out your call and you get me ready to go, but, and I'm involved. How about someone that, you know, is trying to do something? So that.
So great electronic, great website and electronic communication.
Infrastructure for, yeah. The other thing is, we did approve, like, our town meeting approved a housing coordinator, and his position is being advertised for right now. And my question is, you know, is that person who can, talking about staffing shortages, is that a person who will be able to maybe tie some of these departments and boards together around zoning, around, you know, border health, da-da-da, all the different places people have to go? I don't know if that job description that's been published is set in stone, and whether, I didn't provide a foot on that, and I have a lot of ideas. So I hope that we will bring some people together who are meaning to talk about that before we have someone in place, and they're thinking their job's one thing and that, you know, so.
So connected?
Proactive.
Proactive. Other comments, the future?
So, one thing I do worry a little bit about is, are we adding chiefs, or are we adding Indians? Because to get things done, you need Indians, right? Zoning board, for example, sends referrals on every project, to every department. And I know those department heads or whoever it is that is responding are overtaxed, and they do the best they can, but we don't always get a very thoughtful response on each project. So in terms of board coordination, we certainly make the effort. We send it something to every, you know, CONSCOM, engineering, and so forth. And whether they really look hard at the project or not, I can't say.
Can we call it right-sized?
Sure.
For the tasks. Okay, right-sized.
Well, I think to that, I know everybody thinks we just need more Indians, but I don't think that's the case. I, I'm sorry, but I've got a degree in the profession of management, and there needs to be somebody that sets expectations and follows up to make sure that things are getting done. There's a leadership role that knits people together, and if you're all operating in silos, and people aren't feeding back to you as to where you're falling short in supporting the system, nothing changes. And so I'm going to say that I'm looking for better management in this sort of community development director, more as a coordination and setting expectations and following up to make sure things are happening properly. Working toward the planning side, so we have a vision that everybody can work towards, because if you don't have a vision, you can't necessarily expect people to use their own discretion in deciding how they should be approaching each of the problems that they have to address in their job. And people's capacity to rationalize their behavior is enormous.
I'd like to see more community involvement, where we actually bring stakeholders into this conversation, whether it be business, people from various subdivisions, you know, parents. I know you don't have an enormous school age population, but you have good schools here, and you want to bring young families here. Honestly, I think the school, the school board, the superintendent, somebody also should have been here representing that entity, because you take a chunk of money, and that goes to the schools. And that's a big financial, you know, incentive for the schools to be involved in these conversations, because if you're building subdivisions, that usually means more children, and they need to be involved in that with their own planning. So I'd like to see more communication with the schools, and I'd like to see a streamline of how people come into town and the information they receive, and how they can use that even within their own communities.
So information for new residents too, specifically?
I was just going to say accountability, so some clear accountability for some of these things we've talked about, so that it doesn't just, you know, I know that people hear a new position, they think bureaucracy, but that there's kind of a clear accountability of what this individual is responsible for, and that that's a go-to person for department heads, for consumers, for, you know, folks to be able to directly interact with this individual, so.
So in addition to coordination, I hope it's a person who will take to heart the planning board's goals and policies, the five-year strategic plan of selectmen, really familiarize themselves, and have a vision of where the town is moving, and lead that direction.
Lead the charge of the implementation of the vision and the plans.
Right, absolutely.
Just a wordsmithing issue, and I'm just wondering if instead of chiefs or Indians, we could just say managers versus staff?
Sure.
That's all I'm going to say.
My apologies.
My word would be uniformity, and it's kind of a takeoff on what Sam said, now that we're in the staff versus management. Coming from years and years and years of the military, the executive officer was the management person charged with ensuring that other departments executed the mission. And so I think you could draw on that template and apply it to what we're trying to develop here in a community development director.
So clear lines of authority is kind of.
Well, I think the accountability is, it plays into it, but I think you have a liaison person that is checking to make sure that mission work from the departments are being executed.
Can I just clarify something? In your metaphor, Mark, an executive officer on a ship has line of authorities, correct?
Correct.
Is that what you intend?
To a degree. The uniformity aspect of it is, everybody's going to be treated the same, and this is the same standard. I don't care if you're the planning department, the zoning department, CONSCOM, historic, everybody's going to have to meet these standards, and the standards have to be.
So in this context, it's a little hard. Everybody obviously has individual regulations, but sort of the expectation of the quality of submission can be consistent.
I think it's broad reaching.
The types of application forms can even have a level of consistency across them, so you don't have to keep recreating, you know, new forms and stuff like that. So the point is a good one. I guess it's not going to be purely uniform, but as much consistency as can be within the context of the.
And having that one player, that one manager being the accountable entity to ensure that you're trying to work towards that mission.
Yeah, I just want to make a, when I have a master's degree in organization management, so I draw on that a lot, because these are people with a lot of experience that kind of pull together the best practices. But one of the distinctions they made was between a boss and a leader. And we're talking about two kinds of managers. The boss is the one that tells you what to do, and you go out and you have to do it. And they hold you responsible for exactly that. The leader is the person that creates the vision, and basically, you get a lot of wiggle room to decide how you can best do your job to accomplish that vision, that goal for the organization. And you give, you leverage your people, if you're a leader. They get to use that discretion to make those minute-to-minute, hour-to-hour, day-to-day kinds of decisions, which better help your organization meet that mission goal. I just want to make sure when we talk about organizations, you know, line of authority suggests a boss relationship, you tell this person what to do and so on, but there is, if you will, a leadership aspect that gets far more, that really leads to far more productivity.
You know, I think it's been implied by a number of the comments in terms of accountability and, you know, the desire for improved coordination. I, you know, another way to phrase it very simply is that, you know, I think we would like to see an effective management structure with this change. Because right now, for the, you know, the volume of activity and the complexity of the work, the number of direct reports that go directly to the town manager, I would argue as the newcomer, you know, having worked in three other towns, that it's not a very effective structure. So, yeah, you do need additional management supervision, as well as, it's not, so, you know, I think a very sound argument can be made on that basis alone, but additionally, you know, I mentioned understaffed, there is a workforce role. In addition to the management role, there's that economic development and cost of resiliency and community development planning beyond the reactive roles that our existing professional staff are burdened with. So I see it as a combination, there's a management, effective management structure that's needed, and there's additional professional staff resource that's needed.
I'm going to push this, we have, I'd like to make 15 more minutes to wrap this up.
Okay. One, two, three.
I just want to ask a question. Does it articulate where in the organizational chart of the town that this position will be slotted?
Part of our task is to give you some options, some alternatives for where, how this could be structured.
Do we have any of those now?
Well, I'm in the fact-finding, Julian May, but we're, no, we are not in the idea phase. I want to make sure we get all the people's ideas that we possibly can. So someday soon, March, very early March is what the requirement is.
I'm really representing the interested public that exists in Falmouth, and many of the retired people here, of which I guess I count, are very well-informed and knowledgeable and would very much like to contribute more actively in the management of, at the points that we have been discussing. This has been very interesting, for instance, but I have collaborated with the local comprehensive planning board, and I think, without being embarrassed, I have contributed quite a bit from my field, which is urban planning. But I would suspect that there are many people who have so-called retired into this area who could really be contributing very much in ideas, not, you don't want to become a knowledgeable staff member after a certain time, or you don't have the time to contribute that much. But somehow, an open forum like this is very fascinating to us, not just to myself, but to other people. And I think we can contribute more to actually create the web that is necessary to coordinate or relate all the different topics and issues that, for instance, we discussed in the local comprehensive planning board. They are all knitted together, and unless you have the possibility to draw the attention of more. And unless you have the possibility to draw the attention of a more general public into that, I really think that it's worth the effort to creating forums like this.
Thank you.
Accessible in time, which is not always necessary if you want everybody who does not drive cars after dark to attend. And also calling for the comments of people. I really think this is something that we actually discuss at the planning board meetings.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Back to my community involvement. I think if you want the votes at town meeting for any position, you have to bring in the community. And that's why I think, I'm a big advocate of visioning. And when I talked to Ryan and I said, "Has that been done?", and he said, "Back in the '90s it was done." Well, that to me is quite a long time ago. I mean, I may have had different color hair at that point. But I, I so believe in that process. And if people are interested, they'll come. And if you make it interesting, they'll come. And if you tell them, you don't want to raise their taxes, but you need to find some ways to implement some of the things we need to do here in town, that they'll come. And I think some communities are afraid of that, because it can seem overwhelming. On the other hand, I think you don't get buy-in at a town meeting unless, unless they're involved. So, I, I absolutely agree with that process and I think it's a worthwhile, we did visioning and we did it for several years before we came up with a master plan. And I think it works and lots...
I could second that. One of the things I've been doing with almost everybody I've talked to, I've been asking, "What does Falmouth want to be when it grows up?". And I haven't gotten a consistent answer. And so, we can put a great org structure together and it's going to look, and your form's going to be beautiful, but if there's not a clarity of which way, because everything, everything that you talked about earlier is heavy lifting, right? If there's not a clarity about where you want to go, they're not going to be effective anyway. So, very fair point. Got one in the back.
A group of us have been meeting over the last few months, consisting of members from the affordable housing committee, the CPC, the planning board, talking about this subject. And I want to thank Julian, the others, for inviting us in to meet with the comms group and provide some input. We've come up with a little flow chart of what we think would be the way that we'd like to see projects flow in the future. And though it's a little white paper, it's called Affordable Housing Development Town Partnership. It's really for any type of housing project, not just affordable housing. And it creates many of the things that you're talking about, creating a partnership between developers. I'm the chairman of the town DDIC, but I'm also affordable housing developer. It's the input from this group of how we'd like to see the process flow. And I think it answers a lot of the questions and concern that everyone has. And the town does have great employees. We all work with them, they do a great job. I think this helps, we have a very complicated land use regulations and zoning regulations and it's hard for any applicant to understand all that. But it's very important, at least from a developer's standpoint, to have a clear process. And this is just a draft, there's a flow chart attached to it, that helps understand what that process may be.
I really don't think this is the right time to be heading out. I'd rather have it be distributed electronically to the boards, but for, I mean, at this time for us to have a paper in front of us, I would, I would be very confused to be looking at it right now.
Sure.
Can we just leave a pile here?
Sure.
And people can take it if they want it.
Great, thank you. Betsy?
Hi, I just want to go up, go back to your point, that we do have a number of neighborhood associations in town. And I know Julian's been out to our West Falmouth meetings and I know there's East Falmouth and, and so, just to say, kind of the first step to go from what we're doing here and what we might want to see, maybe would be to go out to those meetings, this, they usually have the annual meeting, yours is in the summer too, isn't it?
Yes.
Summer? And this idea of getting buy-in from, because some people are going to listen to this and some people will watch it on TV, but there's going to be a lot of people who are going to say, "Well, what are they talking about? I never heard about this." So, there are mechanisms in town through these neighborhood associations.
It is also number one on the board of selectmen strategic plan, is to start this visioning process. This is one of the first steps, but whether we're going to use the associations, whether we're going to have a wider public forum, but that is our goal in the next five years to really, and we're starting. It's going to be a long process, exactly how we do that.
So, anybody who hasn't spoken that wants to throw anything else up there?
I think we're giving that one position a really tall order. So, you know, we're looking for him to cure everything. But one thing that probably this town does need is somebody who has the ability to make all the boards collaborate and just bring it all together, so that we can be knowledgeable and give that knowledge to not only an eligible homeowner and a developer, but just, you know, more customer service, definitely collaboration.
This is a great step this evening, this morning, to have you all here. So, we heard top-notch electronics, great communication, proactive, implementing the vision, clarity of the accountability and the management structure, right-size for the task. And, you know, some things you're probably doing duplicative now, that over time, as this gets streamlined, will give you some capacity, but I'm sure you're, you're right that there's resource issues.
I was just going to say, sorry, to what all these point is and I think to what folks are saying, but someone who facilitates collaboration. So, that role is someone who really facilitates and, you know, brings folks together so that we are more collaborative, as the various committees and boards and departments that are all doing a lot of hard work, but sometimes it's not being transmitted. So, someone who can do that.
And somehow balancing the, we do want them to be customer-friendly, but at the same time maintaining the regulations we've set down. So, it can't be all based on the customer, let's say the customer's always right, but maintaining that balance between...
The new saying is the customer's always the customer, right?
Right.
You're there to serve them, but they're not always right.
What Megan just spoke about, I think goes to Sam's point, that the kind of person we want is somebody who's able to articulate, is a leader who articulates a vision and is able to get people to work together. I mean, that's, you're not looking for a czar here, you're looking for, you're looking for someone who can be leader on this and who can inspire and who can articulate visions. That's the key.
We've used the words accountability, clarity. This person also needs to, I think this is all going to be what we're calling consumer-based, be able to educate those consumers. A lot of people think conservation, planning board, zoning board, we're all the same. We're not all the same. We all have different regulations, we all have different roles, you know, responsibilities. And I think that's where a lot of the confusion of the user-friendly and the consumer come from. So, I think education's a big part of the accountability and clarity, and that's one word that was used, just threw it out.
So, I have two questions. It says here, community development department. So, are we talking about one person or creating a one-person with staff? And secondly, you must have worked with other communities that have done this and has it worked out well for them?
At the risk of showing my cards, one person can't do all of this, right? They have to have the team. So, we've talked about all the various staff, the for conservation, for zoning and all those folks. So, the, my mind, the task is how does that all get organized to meet those attributes that we just talked about?
To create a department.
To create a department that, that can fulfill what your vision is for that department. And we just talked about the vision for the department separate from the vision for the town. But I have seen it very successful. In Somerville, we had ISD, zoning, planning, economic development, transportation and park design, all in one operation. It's a larger community, but we're pretty well. But everybody's different, so there's, there will be more than one way to, to move toward, toward that vision that you have.
Yeah, and I don't want us to get hung up on semantics. I mean, this, this might be considered to be more of a group. I know we, we were looking at a human services department, everybody got all upset, we kind of had to back off and say, "No, this is really a person who's going to coordinate departments that fall underneath of their responsibilities." So, semantics are always going to be an issue, it's going to threaten people, because somehow they think that their, their job description is going to change and what. But I just want to make sure we understand it's going to be a clustering of probably departments to improve that coordination and communication between those parts and, if you will, setting those overall goals and expectations that people work toward and making sure that their work is more harmonious. Okay, thank you.
Can I give a parallel perhaps as town manager, in terms of structural possibilities? When I arrived as town manager, we did not have a finance department. We had several different entities, terrific department heads working in tandem, but working more individually, not in and up part of an umbrella organization. Through a lot of proposals and discussions, we're going to finance committee, board of selectmen, a town meeting, we're able to create a finance department with a finance director. And I think most people who have paid attention to where we've, where we are now, based upon, compared with where we were, would agree that that's an excellent step. And this is something that could be similar. Doesn't have to be similar, but that is one possible organizational paradigm. It did not change the job description of any existing department heads fundamentally, they still do the same work they do. But we have an individual who really is that collaborator, who is the person who brings in some synthesis knowledge about how everyone can work together. So, that's a concept that might well apply here. And it's a real-world concept for us, because it's one that we've recently done. So, I just want to pass that along. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Start your day.
Next on our agenda is, I think this is on a quest of the planning board, discussion status of the planning board local comprehensive plan.
Okay. Oh, this is going to be very short. As you may or may not be aware, the November town meeting...
Okay, or please, in order, please, excuse me, we can't hear. We're still conducting the rest of the, sorry, we're conducting the rest of the agenda.
As most of you may, I hope, are, are aware, but may not be aware, the November town meeting, by its vote of the remaining two elements, completed our effort on the local comprehensive plan. And we have spent the intervening time, the committee of free and staff, of, as I put it, critifying it, pulling it all together, illustrating it, table of contents, all of that stuff together. So, today, not knowing there were going to be so many entities here when this request went in, I have 16 printed copies of this document. It is meant to be a living plan, as you have seen from the, but you had copies of the coastal resiliency element.
I'm sorry, just the way the acoustics work in this room, if there are conversations in the back, we can't hear the actual conversation. So, if you have conversations, you have to take them out of the room.
So, it's meant to be a living plan. As the work is completed, those will be excised, others will be brought in. We met with all kinds of entities when we were doing this, over time, engineering, bike ways, the institutions, particularly on housing. And they didn't have any housing problem, but we met with housing. And so, got a lot of input on all of this and every single element here. We met with, as Betsy said, I believe, that her and Jen and other people involved with the resiliency element on it. So, we anticipate that this is going to be a living document. We anticipate that it will live for quite some time. That which town meeting has voted, as I've said multiple times, those are very genetic, generic and feel-good elements of this plan. The rubber hits the road with the work items. And all of you here will have ultimate tasks on that. Town meeting will vote it when funding is necessary. But here it is, folks, please use it. And those who do not get copies, sign up and run some more.
Was it on the website?
It is on the website, so it can be gotten off of the website.
Off planning, out of planning?
Yeah, and that's what we were talking...
There's a hazard mitigation plan.
It's there too.
It's there too.
Yep.
There is a search box on the website, so you can put in local comprehensive plan.
I've never looked at the planning website.
Is it all together now?
Than to try to navigate.
I just want, I just want, yeah.
Okay.
As of Wednesday, it is complete on the website.
It's not the separate, perfect.
No.
Great.
That was taken out and this was put in. And I really would like each one of the selectmen to have his or her own individual copy. And I would like the planning board, each of you to have your own individual copy of this. And then, hey, there'll be about four more left.
I just, I just want to mention that I went on last night to the website and I put in local comprehensive plan. And what I got was the planning department, and I went down the links, and there were all kinds of elements down there. And it was not obvious to me that there was one comprehensive document, so we need to clean that up.
Yeah, it's still like...
I don't think the search button really works as well as...
It doesn't pass.
No.
I've used it for some things, but I didn't look for this particular thing. And it is going to be totally overhauled in about...
Oh, okay.
This is very welcome.
So, we have the local comprehensive plan being distributed. Are there other business items that this group of four boards would like to raise and discuss?
Do you want a motion to adjourn? Is that what you're asking?
Well, Paul had to comment, he wanted to make, and then I would love that.
Can I just ask, what's the status, how far along are we on the zoning revision, zoning by law?
Brian's best able to comment on that.
Throughout time down, our consultants, you know, have some examples of improvements. This is probably right around the way they...
Paul?
You're going to schedule a subsequent meeting?
Of the four groups?
Six months?
Three months.
Three.
Three months. Quarterly. Quarterly.
So, around the election time?
In concert with the tax bill.
So, prior to the May election? All right, we'll, we'll talk to staff and see what we can set up.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
So, that's for all four committees adjourning?
Yes.
All of those in favor, unanimous, say aye.
Aye.
We are all adjourning.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.